Oh, am I good?
Good.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And let's have a moment of silence for all of the different boers and all of our soldiers that are overseas. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, folks here, folks at home on this Thursday, October 10th, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, we're going to call up our Chief, Donnelly.
Executive.
For, oh, excuse me. We had an executive session this evening, and we discussed personnel and litigation. At this time, I would like to ask Chief Donnelly to come up. We're going to have police promotions tonight. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. Long time no see. We have two promotions. If I just click that. One is Corporal Verdurami getting promoted to detective. He's moving downstairs to work investigations. And we have Officer Chad Vargo being promoted to corporal. So with that, I would ask the Honorable Chris O'Neal to come up and Officer Verdurami to come up, or Corporal Verdurami to detective Verdurami. While they're on their way up, Corporal Verdurami is being promoted to detective. Andy Verdurami was hired by Warmminster Police April 2000. Verdurami graduated from the University of Delaware with an undergraduate degree in human resources and later a graduate of Millersville University with a management degree in emergency management. Verdurami was promoted corporal in 2010. Andy Verdurami has worked crime scene investigator, field training officer, defensive tactics instructor, and a fingerprint examiner. And he's married with one child. With that, I would bring the Honorable Chris O'Neal up with Corporal Verdurami. And Sergeant Byrne will be holding the Bible for Detective Verdurami.
I, Andrew Verdurami.
I, Andrew Verdurami.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of detective.
And that I will discharge the duties of detective.
In Warmminster Township.
In Warmminster Township.
Bucks County.
Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I also solemnly swear.
I also solemnly swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. I'd like to bring Officer Chad Vargo up with his wife Jenna. Officer Vargo was hired by Warmminster Police in July of '09. Prior to working with Warmminster Police, he worked with Coatesville Police Department and South Heidelberg Township. Officer Vargo attended Westchester University. Officer Vargo has worked as a crime scene investigator, CPR first aid instructor, firearms instructor, and is a member of the Bucks County Major Incident Response Team. Officer Vargo is married to his wife Jenna and has two boys.
I, Chad Vargo.
I, Chad Vargo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of corporal.
And I will discharge the duties of corporal.
In Warmminster Township.
In Warmminster Township.
Bucks County.
Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I also solemnly swear.
I also solemnly swear.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You earned it.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we're going to take a moment for the families to take pictures, and you can have cake. Sorry, guys. Give me one second. Thanks, Ken. Okay. Okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We're gathered here today to celebrate the promotion of these two men that have, they very rightfully so deserved it. The congressman could not be here, but he sent me to congratulate both of you and thank you for the dedication of your service that you've given us. As a Warmminster resident, I am grateful for both of you and everyone here, your community, your family. We're all very, very proud of you. So we had a flag flown over the United States Capitol in your honor, and I would, it's an honor to present that to both of you. So if I could have Detective Verdurami to come up here? Is someone going to take pictures? All right. Corporal Vargo?
So we have a flag flown over the United States Capitol. That's a citation from your documentation on that. And this is for you, sir. Thank you very much for your service.
All right. Corporal Vargo?
So we have a flag flown over the United States Capitol. That's a citation from your documentation on that. And this is for you, sir. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
are too. Getting back to our agenda tonight, we now have our firefighters that we're swearing in, Eric Asta and Brandon Go. Just so you know, we had three, and now we have five. This is going to be a momentous occasion! I would like to thank the people that were really involved with getting the negotiations together. I would like to thank Mr. Joe Velton, who, we all know Joe. Cindy Ott, and the Warmminster and Hartsfield Fire Company. Let's give him a big hand. I also would like to give a special thank you to Mr. Ken Hayes, because he was involved with the negotiations from the beginning to the end. Some of us were involved here and there, but he was there from beginning to end, and I would like to give him a special thank you. Would you, do you have any words you'd like to say, Mr. Hayes?
No, just thank you and thanks to the chiefs and everyone that was involved when, you know, it was quite interesting, wasn't it, Ms.? I mean, we both agreed on one. Alls I have to say is, we all agreed that it had to happen, and we just had to figure out a way to get there. And I'm really thrilled that we're here now. So, you know, hopefully we can keep going. I know Joe never stops setting his goals, but of course, we have to watch the finances for the residents of the township as well. So, anyway, it is a momentous occasion.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Okay, Mr. Joe Velton, would you like to come up to the podium?
Thank you for those statements. It was a team effort to get this through board. Chief Shapiro from Warmminster, Chief McDonald last year, and this year, Chief Artif. They all participated in this hiring program. We did testing, written testing, physical agility testing, interviews. I was glad you mentioned Cindy Ott. She participated in the interview process, and I think we were able to select two of the top candidates out there, and we're proud to present them to you guys tonight. So I'd like to also acknowledge and support, was it Chief Brian Levy from the Elkins Park Fire Company that's here to support Eric Asta, who he was a member of. And if I could get the Judge, Honorable Judge O'Neal, up here, and Eric Asta, and I can say a couple of words about Eric and get the swearing in started. So Eric Asta here is from Elkins Park, Cheltenham Township. He's a volunteer firefighter with Elkins Park Fire Company for about seven years. He's also done some paid part-time firefighting at Union Ballack Inwood, Harmanville Fire Company, Byron Hill Fire Company. He has an associate's degree in fire science from Bucks County Community College, and he's a graduate of Cheltenham High School. He's joined by his family here, and I believe your mother will be holding the Bible. So I'd like to welcome Eric and Judge, is where I'm at?
It's still on. Chris, it's still on.
I, Eric Asta.
I, Eric Asta.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of firefighter.
And that I will discharge the duties of firefighter.
In Warmminster Township.
In Warmminster Township.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I swear to protect and safeguard.
I swear to protect and safeguard.
And preserve life.
And preserve life.
Health and property.
Health and property.
Against fire.
Against fire.
And other perils.
And other perils.
And to maintain proficiency.
And to maintain proficiency.
In the fire service.
In the fire service.
I recognize the badge.
I recognize the badge.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a symbol of public faith.
As a symbol of public faith.
And trust.
And trust.
And I accept so long.
And I accept so long.
As I am true to the ethics.
As I am true to the ethics.
Of the fire services.
Of the fire services.
And make these promises.
And make these promises.
So solemnly.
So solemnly.
Freely.
Freely.
And upon my honor.
And upon my honor.
Congratulations.
Director Velton, I have a question.
Hard question?
No.
All right.
Firefighter Asta's already on duty, right?
Say again?
Firefighter Asta's already on duty, correct?
They're both on duty, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So with that, I'd like to bring Brandon up and his father, and introduce Brandon Go to the Board of Supervisors in the community. Brandon's from Warmminster Township. He's been a volunteer of the Warmminster Fire Department for the last five years, and also in the past year has been a volunteer firefighter with Nottingham Fire Company of Ben Salem. He was, came from Ben Salem Rescue Squad. He's a full-time EMT. He has a bachelor's of science degree from Drexel University, and he's a graduate of William Tenet High School. Welcome, Brandon.
I, Brandon Go.
I, Brandon Go.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of firefighter.
And that I will discharge the duties of firefighter.
In Warmminster Township.
In Warmminster Township.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I swear to protect and safeguard.
I swear to protect and safeguard.
And preserve life.
And preserve life.
Health and property.
Health and property.
Against fire.
Against fire.
And other perils.
And other perils.
And to maintain proficiency.
And to maintain proficiency.
In the fire service.
In the fire service.
I recognize the badge.
I recognize the badge.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a symbol of public faith.
As a symbol of public faith.
And trust.
And trust.
And I accept so long.
And I accept so long.
As I am true to the ethics.
As I am true to the ethics.
Of the fire services.
Of the fire services.
And make these promises.
And make these promises.
So solemnly.
So solemnly.
Freely.
Freely.
And upon my honor.
And upon my honor.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Eric. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Eric, congratulations. Eric, congratulations. Eric, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Director Velton, I have a question. Hard question?
No.
All right.
Firefighter Asta's already on duty, right?
Say again?
Firefighter Asta's already on duty, correct?
They're both on duty, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So with that, I'd like to bring Brandon up and his father, and introduce Brandon Go to the Board of Supervisors in the community. Brandon's from Warmminster Township. He's been a volunteer of the Warmminster Fire Department for the last five years, and also in the past year has been a volunteer firefighter with Nottingham Fire Company of Ben Salem. He was, came from Ben Salem Rescue Squad. He's a full-time EMT. He has a bachelor's of science degree from Drexel University, and he's a graduate of William Tenet High School. Welcome, Brandon.
I, Brandon Go.
I, Brandon Go.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of Warmminster Township.
And the ordinances of Warmminster Township.
And that I will discharge the duties of firefighter.
And that I will discharge the duties of firefighter.
In Warmminster Township.
In Warmminster Township.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I swear to protect and safeguard.
I swear to protect and safeguard.
And preserve life.
And preserve life.
Health and property.
Health and property.
Against fire and other perils.
Against fire and other perils.
And to maintain proficiency.
And to maintain proficiency.
In the fire service.
In the fire service.
I recognize the badge.
I recognize the badge.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a symbol of public faith.
As a symbol of public faith.
And trust.
And trust.
And I accept so long.
And I accept so long.
As I am true to the ethics.
As I am true to the ethics.
Of fire service.
Of fire service.
And make these promises.
And make these promises.
So solemnly.
So solemnly.
Freely.
Freely.
And upon my honor.
And upon my honor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Brandon. Congratulations. Thank you.
So Brandon and Eric join firefighters Gabe Fox, firefighter Justin Brewer, and firefighter Dan Pfeiffer that were hired last year, like you mentioned. But they also join the bigger family, the Hartsfield Volunteer Fire Company and the Warmminster Fire Department, which you see behind me. The firefighters, we're all one big team for our residents, and you just can't say enough about the whole organization now. We have good daytime support, and we have solid volunteers that provide fire service and protection of the community. So I welcome them to this new family. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we truly are grateful for all your service, all the volunteer firemen and our full-time firemen, and we really appreciate everything that you do.
You guys are awesome. So in the meantime here, we're going to take pictures again with your families. We'll take a little break. And have more cake. Thank you.
Do you have two commendations for the Fire Department?
You do?
I do.
Oh, okay. Um... You want to give it to him like I did? Yeah. 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 Yeah.[1331.91]
Judy.
So, as a, as a, the congressman wanted to present his gratitude for both of you young men dedicating your life for public service. So, we had commendations made for you. We had a flag blown over the United States Capitol. So, I'd like to call up Eric. I'd like to call up Brendan Gough.
To clarify, I feel, I'm so, I am, I feel like, I'm so happy.
I'm gonna do that at the end because I missed it in the beginning. I know, I know. Yeah, it's really good that I had, it must have been. Oh, no, 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 that's.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone who has participated in this momentous occasion.
We'd like to remind Congressman Fitzpatrick that there was, how many police officers and other firemen have we sworn in in the last couple of years? He owes us quite a few flags and commemorations. Thank you. Brian will understand. He knows I'm kidding.
He will definitely understand. At this time, I would like to ask Jessica Fox, our Parks and Recreation Director, to present the Eagle Scout Project Award.
Okay, so it's hard to follow all of that, but I am here today to introduce you all to Leo Baranowski, who is working towards his Eagle Scout badge. And so, I just wanted to come up and introduce him, and he's gonna tell you a little bit about his project. But it is very rare for us to have someone come to us with such an organized project, ready to go, that also falls in line with our current mission. So, Leo is working on bat boxes, and that is going to be a continuation of our Meadow program that we started a few years ago. So, it's a really interesting project, and it is a continuation of a larger project, which we love to see. And Leo has really been on top of things. He's had everything incredibly organized, and he's done a really great job so far. We still have a bit of a way to go. We have to install the bat boxes and put up signage and things like that. But, we are, we have had a really great start. So, I am going to let Leo take over, tell you a little bit about what he's doing, and answer any questions you might have.
Hi, my name is Leo Baranowski. I'm a Boy Scout in Haprow Troop 3. So, I'm doing my Eagle project, which is a very important step of getting the rank of Eagle Scout. So, there are three main phases to it. First, you need a proposal, which is kind of your planning phase. So, in that phase, I had to search around, figure out what do I want to do. There's a lot of things you can do. But, I went to the park with the idea of bat boxes, which fit in perfectly to their Meadow project that the park is currently working on. I have a bat box here that I will demonstrate leading. But, after that, once my proposal's all written up, I have a plan, I'm ready to go, I can start getting material. So, I searched around, and I'd like to thank Warrington Home Depot and Haprow Lumber for their very generous donations. With that material, I'll be able to donate 11 boxes to the park.
Wow, that's wonderful.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Yeah, so the box itself should be able to hold around 100 bats. So, that's a lot of bats.
That's great. They eat a lot of mosquitoes, so thank you.
Yeah, I have a box here. I'd like to show everyone.
Yeah, sure, it shows.
Yes, this is the outside of the box. They're painted black, so the sun will heat them up and it keeps the bats nice and warm. And then, inside of it, there's screws, and the bats can climb up in the different chambers.
Wow, really nice.
Good job.
Very admirable, and we certainly need bats. It's, it's, it's critical to our environment, and they eat tons and tons and tons of mosquitoes, and I think it's really admirable, the project that you came up, and I wish you good luck, young man.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have to say something to you, too. Our cheerleaders practice in the same church where you have your scout meetings, and your name is all over the wall on different accolades for your services as Boy Scouts. I'm very proud of that.
Thank you very much.
That you're one of our Warminster Township kids, and you're making a difference in our community, so I want to thank you for that.
All right.
That's awesome. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Fox for all the time she spent meeting with me and helping me plan this project. Are there any more questions?
When do you think you'll start installing the boxes throughout the park?
So, I won't be installing them myself. I do intend to assist the park, and we expect them to be up before the end of November.
Oh, that's awesome.
All right.
Awesome.
Good job.
Good job.
Jessica, are you gonna put any Ben Wilson?
No, so this round is not going to go to Ben Wilson. They'll go to Warminster Community Parks initially, in the Meadow areas there, and then Sinkler, and we're thinking Kemper and Gorson. I do know that they are working on the basin replanting at the Ben Wilson Senior Center, so that is certainly something that we'll consider moving forward. He has made more boxes than we initially anticipated, thanks to the donations and the assistance, which is really a testament to his leadership, bringing people together to help that way. It took a lot of people, a lot of time to put these things together. And so, that will be a consideration. But, for this round specifically, I think we're gonna start in our dedicated Meadow areas, where we started the Meadow program several years ago. Yes. And Leo, it has been my pleasure to meet with you regularly on this project.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jessica, for your mentorship. And Leo, great idea, and we look forward to the bat boxes. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along with our agenda, we're gonna go into land use matters. We have up the Warminster Municipal Authority Sewer Lateral Inspection Ordinance. I will defer to Mr. Tom Scott and to Mr. Scott Holbert from Flager and Associates. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. You'll recall, at the last meeting, we adopted the ordinance, but there was something we needed to address before we had adopted, which we are now taking care of. So, to reiterate why we're adopting this ordinance, the Warminster Municipal Authority has asked us to adopt it, so that a program can be unrolled, rolled out, to have the sewer laterals, the sanitary sewer laterals at properties that are being sold inspected during the pendency of the sale, to check for leaks and cracks. The problem with the leaks and cracks is that the water in the ground, the regular water, gets into the sewer lateral, and then it gets pumped through the entirety of the sanitary sewer system, overloading the treatment plants, overloading the pumping stations, and introducing water that should not be there. So, when people get their laterals inspected, if there's leaks or cracks, they can get them fixed and start to eliminate some of the excess water that goes into the sanitary sewer system. That's all I have. You wanna augment anything?
No. Great description.
Okay, thank you.
Well done, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any questions from the public, from the supervisors? None? Okay. Motion passes. Chair votes aye, five oh. Thank you very much. Okay, public comment. At this time, residents have an opportunity to comment. Hello, Bobby, come on up.
I've got the announcements in the beginning.
I know. I was so excited about the firefighters.
Bobby Loftus, Warminster Tax Collector. As of today, we have 155 people left to pay their township and county bills. That's out of 10,400. So, we're really doing well. I pulled every one of them to see if they paid their school taxes and not their township and county. And there were 30 of them who have paid school taxes and didn't pay township and county. So, tomorrow, I'll be sending 30 additional bills out to them, because the final notices don't go out until November. So, hopefully, some of these just, they've always paid it, so I don't know whether they got lost in the mail, or they just didn't pay it. So, reminders will be going out tomorrow. So, we're really doing well.
That's great.
Thank you so much, Bobby, for the great report.
All right.
Sorry I made you wait.
And once again, I'd like to thank all the residents for consistently paying their taxes on time and early, because it really helps us manage our budgets. So, thank you to the residents.
Any other public comments tonight? Nicole?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay? There we go.
Yep.
All right, so, hello, my name's Nicole Rannier, Sunnitemine Avenue, Warminster. And I just wanted to come here tonight to thank the Board of Supervisors for your confidence in me as interim tax collector. Perhaps this is a perfect moment, segueing after Bobby. As I mentioned in my cover letter to the board, I don't take this position lightly, and I will strive to uphold the high standard, which our current tax collector, Bobby Loftus, has created, and one which both our township and our residents deserve. Sorry. Bobby's done an incredible job these last 25 years, and the caliber of her work shows through in her continuous high rate of tax collection. It's nothing short of an honor to follow in her footsteps. And while there are big shoes to fill, I'm fully invested in upholding the legacy that she's created, that you've done, Bobby. For those of you that may not know me, I just want to also briefly introduce myself. I'm a lifelong resident of Warminster. This is my home. I went K through 12 through Centennial School District. I'm a proud graduate of William Tenet High School. I earned my bachelor's degree at Temple University, Tyler School of Art, and I earned my Master of Public Policy, MPP, and my Master of Business Administration, MBA, at Brandeis University. I have a strong commitment to this community, and I started my career in social services to assist my fellow community members with various needs. I'm on the board of a local nonprofit and serve as a member of the Planning Commission here at Warminster. From my education and experiences, I've established comprehensive skills of financial management, policy analysis, including accounting and quantitative and qualitative methodologies. Upon learning about the coming vacancy of Warminster Tax Collector position, I researched the Act 48, 2015 state requirements, and successfully completed the training program and exam. I earned the certification issued by DCD, which is the Department of Community Economic Development, and am officially what's quote known as the qualified tax collector for here, the state in Pennsylvania. Short of telling you all my whole life story, I just wanted to highlight some of my background to provide more insight into what I bring to this role. As a self-driven, well-organized person, I take the work I do very seriously, and I'm fully prepared to make every effort to excel in this role for the betterment of my hometown. Thank you again to the Board of Supervisors. I really do appreciate all of you and the confidence that you have for me in this position. I really look forward to working with you all. And last, but of course, certainly not least, I want to give a huge thanks to Bobby Loftus for years of dedication and service in this role. Congratulations, and I wish you all the best in your retirement. So, thank you very much.
So, Nicole, I'd just like to say, if you may, you know, it was nice to hear, you know, that you take this very seriously, the tax collector role, because we took it very seriously in selecting you. And I have to say, you know, some of the questions that were asked before, when we announced your intern position, was the fact that you actually went out and did a lot of research and investigation on what the job entailed. You went and took the course, and you passed it, which is, which is something that no one else did. So, congratulations, and I'm sure you'll do a great job, because you have big shoes to fill.
Congratulations, Nicole.
Thank you.
And thank you, Bobby. Any other public comment at this time?
Yeah, I'm here to find out if the story is on the park on the north side of Olive Street.
The story's the same, sir.
What is it?
We gave you a copy of the ordinance, and that's the ordinance that's in place.
And you ain't changing?
That is correct. It's a safety issue.
What's the safety issue?
Thank you for your comment, sir.
Forty years we haven't had a safety issue on that street. Forty years. Now, all of a sudden, there's a safety issue. I asked to hear the safety issue.
We gave you a copy of the ordinance, and thank you for your comment.
What's the safety issue?
Look at the ordinance. Thank you for your comment.
You ain't a comment. You people, I don't, I don't know where you people get your friends from.
Sir, we don't have Q and A here. If you have a problem, you can write a letter to the township or what have you. We gave you a copy of the ordinance, and I thank you for your comment.
And it didn't say there was a danger of anything in that ordinance.
Yeah, that's the last meeting.
It's the best thing I can tell you. I'm telling you, I'm telling you the absolute truth. We showed you the copy of the ordinance, and I do thank you for your comment.
I thought you said this was gonna get checked into.
We talked about this.
Janice, you were gonna look into it, is that correct?
I did, and I asked for the other Board of Supervisors, as well as the, our township to look into it, to investigate, and to see why it's different on different sections of that street, as well as Evergreen.
That's ongoing.
When can he expect to have an answer?
Well, the answer comes to me, and I'll share it with the board.
Okay, thank you.
You can give it to whoever you want, but it's not ready yet.
It's not ready yet, okay. But, it is in the process, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that's the update, sir, at this time. Any other public comment this time? Okay, moving forward, we have the consent agenda. Consider approval of Board of Supervisors minutes dated September 5th, 2024. Consider 850 North Norristown Road, Masonic Village Parking Improvements, Release Number One, from the escrow account in the amount of $76,520. Consider 890 York Road, Phase One Improvements, Escrow, Release Number Three, Final from the escrow account in the amount of $16,431. Consider 890 York Road, Phase Two Improvements, Escrow, Release Number Two, Final from the escrow account in the amount of $11,396.38. Consider lease agreements for copies printers for a five-year term. Consider 440 Nina Way, Release Number One, Final from the escrow account in the amount of $35,051.50. Consider settlement stipulation for Costco, 100 Veterans Way. Consider resolution authorizing the allocation of foreign fire insurance taxes to the Volunteer Firefighters' Relief Associations. And, not last but least, not least, but last, whatever, right, thank you, Judy. Consider Christ Home Shepherd's Crossing Phase 2B, Release Number One, from the escrow account in the amount of $367,077.75. May I have a motion?
Motion?
Second?
I'll second then.
Any discussion from the public, from the supervisory board? All right, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Thank you. Finance Report, John Ramey. First bill list, Chuck?
Give me for sure.
Thank you.
Bill list dated September 19th, 2024, in the amount of $968,504.34. The supplemental bill list dated September 30th, 2024, in the amount of $1,349,141.31, for a grand total of $2,317,645.65.
Thank you, Chuck. John Ramey?
I'll motion to, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll motion to pay the bills.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second that he pays the bills.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? No questions from the public or from the board, correct? Okay.
From here.
All right. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Okay, now you're up, John.
All right, so not much has changed since last month. Revenues are still down 367,000. Again, it's the same exact reason, building permits, electric permits. Those in total are down over 600,000 from last year, which was because of large projects that happened last year. So, last year was a little more elevated than usual. If you take that out of it, we are ahead on revenues, on almost every other line item. So, we're looking good there. The good news, really good news is expenses continue to be lower than last year. We're below by 878,000. The really important part about the expenses, because we could always be less, we're only at 52% of budget, 67% through the year. So, we're, usually the expenses track normally, so like, we're working really good behind expenses. Last year, we're at 57%. So, we're definitely tracking better than last year on that.
Nice.
So, I'd like to hear, John.
Yep. The only other really good news we received in the last couple of weeks was we received the other post-employment benefit actuarial valuation. These numbers go into the financial statements, which eventually would, if we ever went to borrow money, would affect the bond rating. We had a very large liability for these benefits. It's for health insurance after employees retire. We had a $19.4 million liability on our books as of December 31st, 2022. As of December 31st, '23, it's down to 9.8 million. So...
John, you want to repeat that, please, for the residents?
There was a $9.8 million decrease in our liability.
Right. $9.8 million decrease.
And it's really for four specific reasons. It was a couple, in the end of '22, we established the OPEC trust, so we put one and a half million dollars in there. So, it started earning some money. We put it at the end of the year, so there was no dip. It immediately has gone up consistently since then. By having that, it's like the pensions, where we actually have an interest rate assumption. So, we can say, we're gonna at least be making this going forward. So, that took more off. Any new police hires, they're actually contributing to this trust, because they're the biggest part of who gets the best benefits. And the final one is, out of the other unions, retirees are actually contributing to their health insurance cost to the township, just as the current employees are. So, with those four things, that's why we were able to drop the liability in one year by almost $10 million.
That is amazing, and I also wanted to ask you, weren't we one of the first townships to take that action?
Yeah, we're definitely, and I know Steve Wiesner's trying to sell it across the entire state.
Yes, and I'm so grateful that we did take that, that we did that.
And I did call Steve and give him this good news, because I knew he was such a big part of it.
Oh, great. Thank you so much, John.
John.
Any other questions?
So, it's on that, John, that's actually gonna really help our bond rating. Right now, I think we're double A, right?
Yeah.
So, with, you know, when we get our pensions reassessed this year, if everything continues the way it's going, our MMO should significantly go down, which will give us, I'm hoping, a triple A rating in our bond.
Yep.
Something that we never had until four years ago. We didn't even have a bond rating four years ago.
Yeah, it's, when they did the rating, it was with a positive outlook.
Five years ago.
Or, yes, 21. We got it. It came with a positive outlook, because when Bill McCauley was here, we did the bond reading call, and we said, these are the changes that we've been making over the last few months. So, he took that as, you guys are going in the right direction, which was nice.
Right, and those changes that we made actually have come to fruition, so our bond rating should increase, which is, well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no unfinished business, new business. We want to consider the settlement stipulation and agreement for 1125 Murns Road LLC. I will defer to our solicitor, Mr. Scott Holbert from Flager and Associates.
Yes, yeah, this is a settlement stipulation to sell a case in the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas currently. It was a writ of mandamus action. This settlement will deal with the property, the issues that were at the property, and get an equitable resolution. Just to let everyone know, we obviously, we discussed it back in executive session, but also just to let the public know, there's, this is... but also just to let the public know, there's, this isn't a monetary settlement. This is a, just a settlement really, that should do the property and how it will move forward. So we have a plan of action to solve an issue and, you know, help out a business owner, make sure he can expand his business, and he'll be able to move forward. And again, the settlement agreement doesn't call for any monetary payment.
Thank you for the explanation, Mr. Holbert. Do we have any questions from our, from our staff here? I'm sorry, from fellow supervisors?
Need a motion.
Pardon?
Need a motion.
Yeah. And, or, or from the public?
You need a motion first.
May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions now? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. If I'm a little out of sorts tonight, I just got over COVID a couple weeks ago, and I'm not quite there. So, so thank you.
You're doing all right.
Okay, next, professional reports. We have Tom Scott, Township Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I have two items I wanted to highlight. I want to follow up on John's comments earlier about the OPEB liability. The, the reduction in the OPEB liability, as has been noted, is a very, a very happy and fortuitous thing. It did not simply just happen, as we all know. It was a lot of work for a lot of people, including the board, including John, and including our friends at Conrad Siegel and the, our once-in-future king, Steve Wiesner. And so, I'd like to add just some comments about it. You will recall how much in 2021 and 2022, we talked about OPEB every meeting. It dominated our executive sessions. It was a huge worry. And now, through foresight and some hard work, leadership from the board, it's something that I think we have under control. When you shave over $9 million off any liability, something's going right. There are plenty of issues now that are going to take its place, of course. We talk about the MMO all the time. We met with our actuarial firm yesterday to let them know how important the MMO is to us, and get it to us on time, make sure it's correct. Anyway, so that's all very great news. The second thing I want to bring up is the blight, which is another thing we've been working on all year.
Yes.
So this is a dramatic reading, just bear with me, from the notice of filing of declaration of taken, taking. Notice is hereby given that on the 26th day of September, 2024, the redevelopment authority of the County of Bucks filed a declaration of taking at the above court term and number, and in action to condemn the land described in Exhibit A, heretofu which is incorporated herein by reference, which is 231 Sweet Briar Drive, Warminster, PA. So the taking has been filed. And thank you to our partners at the Bucks County RDA for, for helping us with that. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Now moving along to Mr. Scott Holbert from Flagren Associates, our solicitor.
Sure, just to piggyback off of Tom's last item there. So from its filing and from its service, they'll now have 30 days to file preliminary objections. If they don't do anything, the RDA will make their offer of just compensation, and the property will be theirs to clean up. So we're about 30 days away from getting that into a good developer's hands who can take that property and turn it back into a productive use.
Very happy about that. Thank you. I'm sure the neighbors are very happy on Sweet Briar Drive also.
And thanks to Jeff Darwick and his staff as well at the, at the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority.
Okay, moving along to our engineer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have our October Edgiers Report. I don't have any changes or additions. Just wanted to highlight, I get asked a lot, we got Lidl grocery, Lidl grocery store coming back in, different property. They just submitted land development plans for at Street and Norristown Road to subdivide and then build a 26,000, 26,000 square foot grocery store. It's only preliminary, we got a long way to go. They have to deal with a lot of agencies and through our process, but that'll be heading Planning Commission. Another real small project, Christ Home, actually, how did staff mean they're getting rate submit plans to reduce the size of their core building? They want to remove two of the wings and actually build six cottages. They're selling, and in high demand, so that would reduce the unit, dwelling units by 37, reduction. Another big thing would be 24,000 square feet of reduced impervious coverage for the site. So those two changes, they will be submitting and will be in front of you the next couple months.
Thank you, Craig. And as, as I was announcing you, you went too quick, and it's Craig Kennard from Gilmore and Associates. Thank you, Craig. Okay, Township Manager, announcement of upcoming agenda items.
No objection, Tom.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
So obviously, we're here tonight on the 10th. We were originally scheduled to be here on the 3rd. It was moved in deference to the holiday, the Jewish holiday. New Year, thank you. So I would ask that the Board of Supervisors is considering not meeting again next Thursday, as scheduled on October 17th.
Agreed. Any other?
Okay. Now, the bad news is in November, we are going to have to have two meetings, because it's budget season, and we need to get the budget at the second meeting in November. So we're looking at Thursday, November 7th, for a regular old meeting, and then Thursday, November 21st, for a meeting that will be dominated by the budget. The Monday, this coming Monday, is a federal holiday, Columbus Day, Indigenous Person's Day. However, we are open, because we swap it for the day after Thanksgiving, which is, Thanksgiving is on the 28th of October.
November.
Oh, in November. This year, it's in November. You're right, Jess.
Just this year, though.
Just this one year. So that's all I have as far as upcoming announcements on agenda items. The budget's going to be the big one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I also want to point out in the audience, Debbie Getz is one of our new consultants. She's helping us spread the word about the great things we do, that the board does, that we're hiring new firefighters, we're, we're finishing renovations, and, you know, I forget what else we're doing. But she's going to help us get the word out.
Thank you, Debbie.
Fuel tank.
Fuel tank.
So much going on, you can't keep track.
Road improvements. We could go on and on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie.
Okay, since I made, I made this mistake early on in the agenda, because I was so excited about hiring the firefighters, that we didn't have, we didn't do our announcements. So at this time, fellow supervisors, if you have any announcements, go for it. Janice?
Okay, there's a couple things coming up this week, towards the end of the month. This coming Saturday, there's a bingo at the VFW. Please stop by. Central Bucks EMS is having a trunk or treat on October 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at 555 Evergreen Avenue in Warminster. So there's a little QR code. I don't know if you can zoom in here. But if you want to stop by for a trunk or treat, that would be great. You know, I wanted to make this while the guys were all here, but it's okay. But please stop by. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yes, I have a couple announcement, or announcements, yes. I have, Warminster Municipal Authority and Warminster Rotary are doing a tree planting event on Saturday, October 19th, from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., and Sunday, October 20th, from 1:30 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that will be next to the Ben Wilson Center, behind De Sepke's Air, off of Delman Ave. They're looking for volunteers for this, and the volunteers should have proper tools, attire, work boots, gloves, shovel, buckets, and they're going to make it a fun day. Hopefully, we can get a lot of volunteers out for that.
Thanks, Chuck. Judy?
Sure, I'll do one more here.
Oh, sorry.
Also, we have the Craven Hall Historical Society, and the Johnsville Centrifuge and Science Museum invites you to join them for a public dedication of their joint exhibit space consist, consisting of an expanded and update of John Finch's display, a new Brewster NADC exhibit, a new STEM classroom. This will be Sunday, October 13th, that's this weekend, at noon, at the Craven Hall Historic Site at 599 Newtown Road.
Thank you.
That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, for any residents that are still listening, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so do everything you have to do, check with your doctors, and make sure that you're okay. It's also Autism Awareness Month, and in that vein, there's going to be a 2024 Cars for a Cause Car Show at Warminster Community Park from 10:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, and it benefits Bark, which is a Bucks County Autism Service Center that we have right here in, in Warminster. There's going to be food trucks, and karate demos, and dancers, vintage dancers. I'm not sure exactly what that means. But anyway, there's going to be vintage dancers there. And then, this is also Fire Prevention Week. We had a lot, we had firefighters sworn in today, which was a good thing. And for Firefighters Prevention Week, it's a good time to check your home for fire safety, and you can find tips on that on the Warminster Township website. And for the library, they have open mic on Wednesday for poets and creative writers. You can go at 6:00 p.m., and if you have something you want to say, or something in your heart you want to give to people, there's an open mic there in the small meeting room. And on Halloween week, they're having something every day at the, at the library. It's a scavenger hunt. You have to find 13 pumpkins in the library over the week, and the person who finds the 13 pumpkins first gets a prize.
Thank you, Judy.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, as I do every year for Warminster Day, it was a wonderful event. I'm glad everyone could attend, and I definitely want, as I do, because they do a great job, I want to thank our Public Works Department. I want to thank our police force and our fire department. I heard the Touch a Truck was a great event. Some of my police officer friends from Philadelphia attended, and they had their kids with them, and they said it was, it was a wonderful time. So once again, thanks to the Public Works Department, our police force, and our fire department. Thank you.
Okay, just to pig, thanks. Anything else, Mr. Hayes?
No, that's it.
Thank you. To piggyback on Warminster Day, I wanted to also thank the Board of Supervisors and Manager's Office, Janice Charlton and Judge Chris O'Neill for volunteering at the event, Police and Fire Department, and Ken had mentioned the Touch a Truck, all the vendors and sponsors who made not only this event possible, but also braved the rough weather. I want to say, I was really surprised, I was there all day, how many folks brought their kids in the misty rain. The parents said they just wanted to wear them out. They had a blast. So I had a blast, the kids had a blast. Thank you for all the volunteers. It was a phenomenal meeting tonight. It was an epic meeting, having our volunteers, having additional paid firefighters, and I'm very excited about that, and our promotions for our police officers. Thank you, fellow supervisors, for a very productive meeting. Thank you.
One last thing, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I just want to let everyone know that our Dropbox in Warminster Township will be on-site and ready for mail-in ballots on October, Monday, October 21st.
Thank you for that information. Yeah, at the Warminster Library.
Oh, and I learned, today, I was up at the courthouse, and on the 15th of October, you can actually go into the Board of Elections, and you can vote on demand, where they will pull your ballot up, and you can vote in person early.
Thank you for that information, too, Janice. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
So moved.
Good job.